I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward divides by the Nebraska Open Means Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Means Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting room facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall approach the podium, state their name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by him any appropriate response from the council shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary and may elect to take action on any of the items listed. A couple of things I wanted to add is, if you do come to the podium to speak, once your time is up or you've concluded your comments, the council may still ask questions. But once that's done, then we would ask you then to sit down and allow someone else an opportunity. But not, we're not going to have people keep coming back up because they have another thought. Once your time is up, and your time is up. So I just wanted to make a note of that. That's all I have at this time. Please call the vote.
Welcome.
Present.
Back.
Here.
Captain.
Here.
Fritz.
There.
Miller.
Here.
Say over. Schmidt.
Here.
Ian.
Here.
First item this evening is a consideration of approval of draft minutes of November 6, 2018.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please weigh the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Fritz Miller, Schmidt, Ian, welcome.
Next, we have items two through seven, which consists of the consent agenda.
Move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please weigh the votes.
Welcome back, Captain Fritz Miller, Schmidt, Ian, welcome.
Item number eight is our first public hearing for the evening. It's a consideration of the special use permit application for a tract of land in the Twin Oaks Development Sixth Edition. This is the 1,000 block of Walnut Street to operate a recreational vehicle storage facility. Greg, did you want to start, or did you want to add?
I think we'll go ahead and have Ed start to present the item, and then have the applicant, and then we can follow up on that.
Okay. Welcome, Ed.
Good evening. This is a special use permit application submitted by Storage Ninjas LLC, Catherine DiAgostino. To operate a recreational vehicle storage facility at the 100th block of Walnut Street. The applicant also plans to construct a convenient storage facility, which is already allowed in the I-1 zoning district without a special use permit. The applicant is authorized to act as the agent of the current owner of the land, Roger Lidner, as he submitted an authorization letter. The applicant contingent to the approval of the special use permit has indicated they will then purchase the land after it is subdivided. The subject tract of land is currently located in an I-1 limited industrial zoning district, and it is surrounded by I-1 zoning on all sides. The Unified Land Development Ordinance states that an RV storage facility is only allowed in an I-1 district under a special use permit. That part is clear. The ULDO currently addresses RV storage, but some of the regulations aren't confusing as written. City staff are working with RDG to revise these regulations, to be clear. Okay, an example of this is Article 3, Use Types. It states that RV storage is a commercial use type along with, or the definition is, establishments that include the storage and/or display boats, campers, and motorized recreational vehicles for the purpose of rental or sale. Does that include renting storage space for the storage of private RVs and not the purpose of rental and sales? I believe it does. Article 31, Supplemental Use Regulations, addresses commercial uses and lists auto service, repair, equipment repair, travel center, truck stop, RV storage, and body repair uses. Subsection 1 states in part, outdoor storage is permitted only where incidental to auto repair and body repair. RV storage is typically conducted in the outdoors. A previous developer applied for a special use permit for RV storage at the old John Deere location on East Highway 34. In that case, the property was located in the C-2 Highway Commercial District, which it was then related to this section. Skipping down to Article 44, Administrative Procedure and Penalties, Conditional Use Permit, Scope of Approval. Planning Commission, City Council may, at their discretion, apply a conditional use permit to a specific owner or applicant. Proven agencies may establish special site development or operational regulations as a condition for approval of that conditional use permit. In summary, the city has to decide where the best location for an RV storage is, which will cause the least amount of negative impact to surrounding properties. Again, the city is working with RDG, planning and design, to revise these sections to get them a little more clear as part of the comprehensive plan update. Notice of Public Hearing was published in the newspaper, mailed to all property owners within 300 feet of the subject land, and the subject land was posted with a zoning action sign. Planning Commission met last night and voted to recommend denial by a majority vote.
Thanks, Ed. Are there any questions or comments from the council at this time? Yes, Alan?
What was the Planning Commission's main reason for denial?
I believe it was confusion in the zoning regulations as written.
So they didn't find anything particularly objectionable about the project itself?
Not that was indicated, no.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the council?
Majority vote, what was the vote tally though?
It was 6-3.
6-3, so good.
Well, this is a public hearing, so we'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. If the council wishes to comment or have questions later, they sure can do that. So we'll open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. Anyone from the public wish to address the council at this time? Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kathryn DiAgostino, and this is my husband, Eric. Our address is 1905 High Street in Lincoln, Nebraska, 68502. We are applying for a special use permit to have boat and RV storage at our business, Storage Ninjas, the self-storage business we are building as indicated on the application. We are requesting you table the decision on the special use permit tonight and return it to the City Planning Commission for clarification. Let me give you some background on Storage Ninjas. Our facility will be built in between two existing self-storage facilities. ZKE Self-Storage, directly to the north, which does not have boat and RV storage, and Seward Self-Storage, to the south, which does. Neither of the existing facilities has a fence. Ours will, and it will also have security cameras and lighting in compliance with Seward's Dark Night Compliance Regulations. Our parcel is zoned industrial and is surrounded on all sides by land that is zoned industrial as well. Last night, the Seward Planning Commission denied support for a special use permit for our project after concluding the municipal code zoning was ambiguous on whether boat and RV storage was appropriate in an industrial park. If there is any ambiguity in the charter, it should be resolved in our favor for three reasons. First, equal protection of the laws requires that people similarly situated be treated equally. It is our understanding that the similarly situated self-storage facility to our south already allows for boat and RV storage, but was not required to get a special use permit. Another competitor, self-serve storage, is in the middle of a residential neighborhood and also has boat and RV storage. To deny us the same treatment is to deny us the equal protection of the law. Without the benefit of the boat and RV storage, it is estimated that we would lose $80,000 the first year, which is obviously untenable. Second, when Storage Ninjas signed the agreement to purchase the land in the industrial park, we acted under the assumption, based on current uses of the industrial area, which has at least two storage facilities, that boat and RV storage would be an acceptable use for an industrial area. If there is any ambiguity in the code as it exists, it should not be interpreted against us after we signed the contract to purchase the land. If the city council wants to rectify and clarify any perceived ambiguity, it should be on future purchases and not ex post facto. Third, for the neighbors, this is a classic case of not in my backyard. If boat and RV storage is not acceptable for an industrial development, where would RV and boat storage be appropriate? Certainly not in commercial and residential areas. We are buying in Naperville and moving to Seward. We are excited to be your neighbors. Part of being a good neighbor is not parking your boat or RV in your yard, driveway, or on the street. By allowing boat and RV storage in industrial zoning, the city is facilitating a secure location for these items to be placed out of sight rather than next to garages and in the side yards of residential neighborhoods where they create an eyesore. I cannot imagine a better use of an industrial park than boat and RV storage. What would the neighbors prefer? Auto painting? A dog food plant? The neighbors who object to our use would have objected to any proposed use. If they wanted the area for a park, they should have raised funds and purchased the property. They should not be allowed to bully their way into private property rights. Our attorney is in Houston for the holidays and is not available to assist us with the hearing this evening. He believes that Storage Ninjas should be entitled, as a matter of law, to the benefit of any ambiguity in the city code and should be permitted to offer boat and RV storage like its similarly situated and zoned neighbors. To deny our permit is to deny us equal protection under the law. Further, there are other industrial uses that would be far more intrusive to the neighboring community. Please table the vote at the city council meeting tonight and ask the Planning Commission to reconsider the denial of the recommendation. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Yes, Alan?
If we were to table this, send it back, you would be willing to wait until we went through our own issues with the wording and came up with acceptable wording for the ordinances? You don't have a timetable, you can wait?
Well, I would say, I mean, what are you anticipating?
I have no idea, but I'm just saying, I don't know.
Several years?
No. But you don't.
Yeah, we would certainly be happy to wait a reasonable amount of time.
Okay.
Thank you, Alan. Any other questions?
Ed, where are we at on the review of the code?
We've already began our process with RDG. We've received input from them and should be able to wrap it up here in a few weeks.
Yes. Okay.
My recommendation would be, is if this body decides to make that recommendation though, is that we address RV storage specific, separate from the comprehensive document that we're going to work on for the ULDO update that's in conformity with the comprehensive plan review. Because that's such a big document, and as you can see, this is going to be a very focused discussion, that just like shipping containers tonight, that we just pull RV storage out and bring it as its own ordinance, address it individually with planning and zoning, and then back to the council. So, and then we can also expedite that. Again, the comp plan is a little bit slower moving process. So if it was this body's recommendation, we could expedite that quicker, probably have something to you within 30 days. Because we'll probably have to do some public hearings and things like that, P and Z, you guys again. Is that accurate, Ed?
Correct. And as I mentioned, we started the groundwork with RDG already.
Yep. Any other questions for them? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment? Kelly?
My name's Tom Matsky, I live at 116 South Columbia. Just a person to address the ambiguity of not allowing them by the law of having their RV against their rights, I guess, what they're saying. The current RV storage south there does not have an application for storage. He has started parking RVs there, so he does not have a permit. You can ask Ed. So that's not, there's no laws. You're voting, hopefully voting tonight, voting no. But there is no breaking their laws and ambiguity and all that stuff. And I don't have a lawyer either, but maybe I should. But anyways, and then last night, some of the, the planning board did vote 6 to 3 for no. There will be other people speaking tonight that you can see RV storage when you drive down Highway 15. You look to the west, you can see them. That's going down the highway, Highway 15. Not alone driving down Pine Street, which that would be right off the road, seeing the RV storage, right there. So my question is, is that last night they voted 6 to 3 because you can see the RV storage, you can see them from the road. It wasn't just because of the, your question was the question of the reading of the UDL and stuff like that. It was also because they voted no because you can see them. And it was just like John Deere got denied because you can see them, and now you have trailers and enclosed trailers, which, you know, I don't get that either. But anyways, that guy was denied too. But, so you're not breaking their laws or infringing their rights by voting no tonight due to the fact that the other guy doesn't have a permit either, Seward Storage, you can ask Ed. So he just started parking there. So there's no, I hope there's no pressure on that. So anyways, my question is, is, you know, how many stories, you know, facilities can you put side by side down there? You have south storage right there. You have the proposal Ninja Seward Storage there, whatever. You have Dave Waterman that has storage right there, and then you have my facility, which is the first facility there. That I went through the board just like this and got approved. And now, obviously, other people are moving in, and that's America. But there's nothing I can do about that. But I am asking each and every one of you to vote tonight as a vote tonight for a no, because you can see them from the road. You can see them when you drive down Pine Street, you can see them down the highway. What else do I have? And it's just like, you know, John Deere and everything else, let's bill as a no. So yeah, I mean, that's pretty much sums it up. The guy doesn't have RV storage permit. You're not infringing on their rights. This is going to be the same thing, you're by a residential area. The trailer park is across the right, right across the road. So if you're infringing on them, on them, it's the same deal. It is a residential area across the street. So, you know, let's look for John Deere's. So I am asking for a no. Well, just like the planning board committee did last night, 6 to 3. And I think it should be addressed tonight and not tabled because it's not going to go any farther. I mean, it's just going to be the same deal of their words, in our words, and it's pretty much a done deal, it's in a residential area. Thank you.
Thanks. Hang on, one second, before you go. Any questions? Or are you too far? Seeing none? Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the council, or anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item?
Can you give me pictures? Can you give my deck?
Hey, those are pictures.
Tom Tholes, 2450 Redwood Road, here in Seward. One of the, one of the things that Tom just talked about, and it was talked about last evening, and I think it's a valid point. I've been in Seward since 99, so I'm not a lifer. But I, I take a lot of pride in this city. My wife and I own a business, we own US Sailor in town. And when, when people drive into town, I want them to see our best foot forward every single time. And I think what we've done on the east end, it just looks fabulous walking, you know, driving into town. We've got the flags, we've got the nice new sign out there, and we've got some of those things. As you come in from the south, come in from the interstate, it's not quite as pleasant. It's already not quite as pleasant. We know that. I mean, we drive in and we see where it's, there's nothing wrong with the Case Building, there's nothing wrong with the Seminary, there's nothing wrong with Walmart. But then when you start to come in a little bit, then it, you know, you can see the trailer park pretty quickly, and it's not right away our best foot forward. The thing that I took pictures of today after it was talked about last night, and I'm just showing these here, is that she is exactly right. We are a neighborhood that doesn't want change. We are the good old guys that don't want change in our neighborhood, back there in Redwood. But one of the conversations I had with, well, Tom today, that is selling a property, is that this, this RV park will not be able to be seen. You know, it's going to kind of be hidden back in there, and it's not going to be something that is, you pick it up very quickly. Well, I mean, this is just a couple photos from across the pond. That is going to be looking right at nothing but RV storage. So that's the first thing. And that's, that is just our neighborhood. Yes, I'm saying it right now, that's me being selfish. I don't want to look at trailers. So that's, that's my personal thing. But it's also that the council's going to talk tonight about rezoning R-3 for our area. So now there's going to be more and more traffic down that road. The site is not a pretty site. You go by Midwest Auto, which has all the junk cars and stuff sitting back and back, which is not enclosed. You have trash containers behind Casey's that are not enclosed the way they should be. I, you know, I ran a restaurant for years, they have to be enclosed, they're not. And then you go by, you had the sewer pits. Now those are gone. Thankfully, we fought for three years to get those filled in to make that a decent looking property. So then you're going to go back and you're going to go by this pretty city park that we have right here, except right behind the city park, all you're going to see is RV storage. If you also look at the pictures, this is my selfish picture from the neighborhood, but also we have some pictures, if you're going down the highway, this is, if you look right, this is, I don't remember if that one's right there at the old, um...
Aspirant?
Yeah, Aspirant Building. But that, that is going to look back, and as you come through that wide open area, that's, you're going to see the RVs. That's going to be one of the very first things you see. Going down the road, just even a little bit further there, it's going to be more RV storage there that you're going to be able to see, or maybe just part of it. I, you know, I'm not saying the whole thing. And it may be hidden back there enough, and this is, Tom, I don't, I don't know. It may be far enough back to the, to the north that maybe you won't see it. And that's my druthers, that if we, if we do get a yes on this, which I'm a no, but if we do get a yes on this, I hope it is far enough back that it is hidden behind the, you know, some of the spruces or the pines and things like that. But it is one of the things that people coming in from the interstate are going to see first. My question is, is that the perception we want for Seward, for people coming into town? I, I don't know that I have a problem with it being tabled. I'm still more of a no on it. But I do believe the council or the city, as we talked about last night, there's got to be some better verbiage on this because it's, it is very vague. And it's not right, frankly, to them that all of a sudden they're caught in this, which I think that was part of the vote last night, the 6-3. Part of it was, I mean, we don't know what we're actually doing here. And we don't know if we can actually say yes or actually say no. So I think the verbiage needs to be taken care of, and it's one of the things you're talking about. I still personally would like to see you say no to this. There's got to be a better place to put RV storage that is not on the, just off of the state road that people can see coming in. So, thank you very much.
Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Welcome.
Thank you. Gerna Pink Lewis, 2596 Redwood Road. I'm sort of a no, but if it's done right, I'm not totally against it. But it is a case of not in our backyard. We have fought to clean up the lagoon area, and it took a lot of effort by the neighbors, a lot of complaining. We got that taken care of. There are still some unsightly areas in our neighborhood, which I, kind of like a vocal person and like things neat and tidy, so I have some things I'm going to address in the future in our neighborhood. Some of those Tom mentioned also, about just basic clutter that should not be seen coming into our neighborhood. It's not a pleasant entrance to our neighborhood from the east. So now, if we have someone coming in from the south, they have a camper boat storage unit place, which the one in Lincoln, on the way into Lincoln, is, it's there. You know, what can you do about it? We don't want it to get there and then have to wonder what we can do about it. The applicants wonder where a good place for this storage unit might be, and I suggest maybe in your backyard. And that's all I have.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none? Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? No one else? Then we'll close the public comment portion of this item. Does the council have any other questions or comments at this time? Yes, Ed?
The areas now that the RV storage does exist, I know, like South Columbia, there's quite a bit there, right? And is that operating under some sort of special use permit?
It is not, that I'm aware of.
And that's like, would that be down there, R-3?
R-4.
That's R-4, okay. Then you've got, when you come in from the west of town, across from Pack and Save, I don't know if they're still there, but there's been a lot of semi-trailers over the years on that property, right north of Pack and Save. Are they still? Are they still? Is that operating under any sort of trailer storage permit? They're just parking them there. And then as they brought up, the Seward Self-Storage, or whatever it's called, the newest one there, now there's RVs appearing without any kind of special use permit, right?
That facility started as just a convenient storage facility, and over the years, they started adding RV storage. It's been on my list to address him and send him a notice and orders, which I drafted and have city administration reviewing, telling him he needs to apply for a special use permit or get rid of them.
Right, right. So a couple questions, and this may be also for Kelly. So that, obviously, we need to clean up the language on the zoning and whatever ordinances are involved. If we do that, okay, say for instance, we say, well, RV storage is only allowed in industrial or R-4, whatever we say. Then that would have ramifications for these other areas where they're being stored. We'd then have to issue either, either deny it, and they have to vacate them, or we'd have to issue special use permits, correct? Or how does that, I guess I'm asking, how does that work? If we create a new zoning, you know, ordinance now, is there a grandfather issue?
It is.
So they would be, but what if they were never operating under a permit to begin with?
Well, you have to look at it each case by case basis. If it was allowed or not allowed, and in the base zoning district, you could address that that way. Also, they become a pre-existing non-conforming use once the zoning's changed.
Pre-existing non-
Non-conforming use. And then if it goes away, it can't come back.
So they, they really could get grandfathered, basically?
Correct. Unlike Seward Storage, they're absolutely in violation of RV storage without a special use permit because they didn't start out that way. They started out with just convenient storage units.
Sure, sure.
So there's a couple paths here. One is we need to get this cleaned up and maybe a little bit less ambiguous so that not only does the council know what it is you're passing, but the public has a reasonable understanding by looking at it as to what it means you can and can't do. So that's going to be a part of what we're working on right now, and that's working on that. And the other part is going to be specifically this request here as how the council wanted to proceed. The timing's not- The timing's not ideal, obviously, because I, I would rather we get everything figured out first, we know what, what the rules are, we know what the policy is, and then start taking applications, but this is what's before you right now. And so maybe the cart may be a little bit ahead of the horse on this, but, but I don't wanna muddy the two issues. The one is gonna have to get, we have to clean this up and we have to be consistent in those that are currently violating the ordinances. If they're still violating that ordinance, whatever the council decides to do, we're gonna need to go around. A lot of what we do is complaint driven, and so oftentimes we're sometimes the last to know because usually it takes a neighbor or someone to let us know if they think somebody is, is parking or storing in the full grid. So in this particular situation, I know I talked to Kelly, if you would want Kelly to do an opinion on, on this particular application for a special use permit, he can sure do that. I think we probably internally in the administration need to get on the same page with Kelly with whatever that looks like. If you wanna go back to the planning commission and then once we have, have that information presented to them and see if the vote changes or not. That's one option. The other option is if you, if you don't wanna move forward with this, we'd vote it down tonight and go from there. Obviously, you could vote to approve it, but given that David is gonna ask to have a table, that would be pretty brazen. But they'd be okay with that, I might assume, if you decided to go that route. But those are pretty much your three options. Oh, sorry, hang on one second, you wanna finish?
I would, the other comment I was gonna make is that I think it's, it's obviously important that we, we give ourselves and the public clear direction because we don't allow RV parking in your driveway. So we need to provide a place where they can do, you know? It's just like saying you, you can't keep your trash out in front of your house, so we have to have somewhere to put it.
So we need to find a convenient location that nobody can see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A real deep hole with trees around.
And that's why we're here. I think Chris first and then John.
I was gonna... My, my comment, Josh, and, you know, I've had this conversation before and I'm frustrated that we're getting in this predicament here tonight, whether it's the code or whether we have somebody violating ordinances or policies because we rely on complaint driven. I mean, we, we have people in the city who are out there who know, who are employees of the city, know these things, and if they don't, we need to get them educated and we can't rely on complaints from citizens because quite frankly, I'm a little bit embarrassed for the city that we're dealing with this. Because we shouldn't be. If somebody's parking RVs and there shouldn't be RVs, whether it's the police force or somebody who saw it and knows that it's going on, we can't rely on the citizens all the time to complain. You know, we, we have a responsibility for our city. You know, I, I had this conversation recently with another member of the city and if, I'm gonna use a, a very well-known to me and you can giggle at the, the, uh, lightness that I'm gonna draw here, if Disney waited for somebody in the park to complain because something didn't look right, Disney wouldn't be what Disney is. So we, we need to have that discussion as a council, as a city on where we wait for complaints to come from. So, so that we're not in these situations. Because it is unfair.
Yes, um...
I agree with Chris, but I just don't see that we can be fair to anyone tonight to do anything but table it and let us work through this process. And I would recommend, I would, you know, certainly go along with getting Kelly's input and having the city work through it, taking some time, not saying no tonight, but just, you know, giving ourselves adequate time to figure this out and come back. I don't think there's anything else that's fair.
Second.
That's motion.
Hang on, I was agreeing, realized it was a motion. Would you restate your motion, please?
To table this and allow the city to go through the process of cleaning up the language, getting input from Kelly as needed, and then coming back to both the planning commission and the council.
Okay, as far as both, we have to do one before the other. You're talking about giving the information on the planning commission on this particular request and then coming to the council with a general...
Okay, I see, okay. Let's just, coming to the council with a general recommendation on changes to make to this ordinance and then, I guess we could...
And specifically with this request, go to the planning commission?
Go to the planning commission.
Once we feel like we're comfortable with moving...
Yeah, I think it needs to go back to the planning commission just to see where they are at once we get better language.
Didn't mean to triple your...
Sorry.
Your motion length. Uh, that's the motion, is that what you're, motion in a second? Yes, and for the discussion, yeah, John.
Do we wanna hear what Kelly's thoughts are before we...
I think Kelly would prefer a time to review. Yes, John?
Yeah, thanks for calling me out. But one thing that we did do, we've done this for other businesses as well, and, and we put this in writing that because of the visual going by, we held the business to come into this town with special requirements on what the property was gonna look like. And hopefully when we're looking at this, that we are considering this because if we held one business to this because people are concerned about visual, we need to uphold that with other businesses because this is gonna be a business. It, it's, even though it's trailers, but, and then the other thing that really concerns me is we aren't following the regulations and policies in town with boats and trailers and you see them all over town and we're not upholding that. I, I support Chris one hundred percent on that.
And I apologize for not coming back to you right away. Anyone else wish to comment on this item? If not, we have a motion in a second. Seeing no further discussion, please press for your votes. Please play the votes.
Item number nine, this is also a public hearing, consideration of ordinance to rezone tracts of land in the Twin Oaks Development Fifth and Sixth Edition, this is west of Cottonwood Street and Redwood Street from I-one Limited Industrial District to R-three Urban Residential Mixed Density District. Ed?
Okay, this is a rezon application by Thomas Caton to rezone a tract of land located to the west and south of the dead end streets, Redwood Road and Cottonwood Street. The applicant is authorized to act as the agent of the current owner of the land, Roger Littner. Contingent to the approval of the rezon application, the applicant has indicated he will then purchase the land and subdivide. The applicant reports that if the rezon is approved and after he purchases the land, he plans to sell the rezoned area to another developer who will then replat the subject land and will develop into residential parcels. Before any development can happen, that subdivision needs to be subdivided under major subdivision application, which will include all the infrastructure, design, street extensions, utility et cetera, extensions, et cetera. The subject land is currently located in the I-one Limited Industrial District, which is directly adjacent to an existing R-one Urban Residential Single Family District, low density. This part of the city was annexed in approximately two thousand and two. The existing residential neighborhood, Twin Oaks Development First Edition, was platted in nineteen seventy-three. Some of those parcels in the subdivision do not meet the minimum lot width for an R-one zoning district, which is seventy-five feet wide. The city's current comprehensive plan, future land use map, does not show any planned use for the subject area. The city is currently conducting an update of the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, which will show this area as urban reserve. The comp plan outlines the urban reserve as land needed to accommodate growth over the next ten to twenty years. The planning commission met, met last night and voted to recommend approval by a majority vote. Notice of the public hearing was published and the Southern County Independent bailed all property owners within three hundred feet of the subject land and the subject land was posted with a zoning action sign.
Thanks, Ed. Anyone in the council wish to comment or any questions at this time?
With that majority vote, Ed, what was the, you know, the count of that?
One, two, three, four, five, six. Six to two.
Ed, does this, does this area include the area that they were requesting to put the RV facilities in?
It's part of the same seventy acres, but it is a distance away. It's at the dead end of, of Redwood Road and Cottonwood Street.
But it would fall within the boundary of what we would be talking about here, yes?
It's part of the seventy acres, yes.
Any other question or comments from the council? Seeing none, it's time, I'll go ahead and open up the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number nine. Is there anyone, anyone from the public wish to comment on item number nine? Welcome?
Good evening, city council members. My name is Thomas Caton. I am the managing partner of LKK Farms LLC, the entity that is purchasing the ground that is in question tonight. I'm a local developer that was born, raised in Seward and graduated from Seward High School in two thousand and fourteen. I then went to the University of Nebraska-Lincoln and will receive my degree in econ economics this December. I've been very blessed and currently own and operate a company called Tractor Man and co-own a construction and real estate company that is based out of Seward. I'm also getting married this May and will live at eleven nineteen Augusta Drive, Seward. The piece of land in question tonight makes up approximately seven acres and is currently zoned light industrial. We would like to rezone from light industrial to R-three to better suit the neighborhood and our needs. Approximately five acres of what we want to rezone will be sold to Dana Point Development, an experience, an experienced development company that specializes in high-quality townhomes and single-family homes. Dana Point has an extensive track record across the state of Nebraska and has built eleven high-quality, single-family homes in Seward. The design standards for all the dwellings, I will list off. Then I apologize for the poor quality of my printer, but you can kinda see the quality of work that they do. But many of the, the proof materials that they used is hard cement siding using different colors and types. Many of the exterior, as you can see in the pictures, is stone and brick, at least twenty-five percent of it will be. Approximate size of single-family homes will range from thirteen hundred and fifty square foot to sixteen hundred and fifty square foot. About two, there are two car garage minimums that he usually has on the single families and usually has three car garages. They are usually drywalled and finished out and he actually upgrades his installation to spring. And then the other couple acre, acres, we will actually retain in the hope of continuation of single-family homes in this area. And I guess before I get too far ahead of myself, I guess you can kinda see on the map there, but the development that we're basically rezoning is, we were to draw a line right there, everything north of there is what we're zoning. And to give you an idea, I think someone asked where the RV storage was, but that's actually right here. So it is the same seventy acres, but it's a little different location. I have gotten the, the opportunity to speak with a few of my future neighbors and I'm excited to be part of such a kind and passionate neighborhood. During our discussions, many of them noted that they are in favor of residential zoning rather than light industrial zoning because it prevents a developer from coming in and putting in more light industrial in their backyard. However, they are rightfully nervous about R-three zoning because it states under R-three that it is possible to have gross densities up to eighteen units per acre. This at first glance is very confusing and I can completely understand the concerns for the fear of having an apartment complex in the backyard. I've assured the neighbors, as do I assure you, city council members, that nobody is building an apartment complex in this area of question, but rather using the benefits of R-three zoning in single-family and townhomes. It'll also provides transitional zoning to eventually get to R-four zoning at the far south end property of Burke Street, which would be... So this is Cottonwood, again, where the, where we'd like to rezone to R-three. This is Burke Street, that is on the far south end, that is, I think nearly half a mile away from where we're actually rezoning. I also understand that some may feel that if myself and/or Dana Point sell the land to a different developer, that there's a risk of them building an apartment as we would no longer have control of the property at that point. I would like to note that this, that if this were to happen, the individual would have to go, the individual developer would have to go through zoning and planning and then city council to get a special use permit in order to actually put multifamily there. I can assure you, all this rezone, that, I can assure you all that this rezone from light industrial to R-three will better serve the neighborhood as well as the future growth of Seward in general. At this time, I will take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Yes, Chris?
Thomas, Dana Point, is this the California company that did the stuff by the cemetery?
Yes, sir.
Is, is it going to be, uh...
Grand Park is the name of it.
Is it gonna be...
NIFA?
Yeah, thank you, I was trying to think of the program.
So that is typically what... What's that, sir?
Low-income housing using the NIFA program. I mean, they applied for state dollars and used Nebraska state dollars to do, to help fund the building of what they did at Ramp Garden.
Right, so that is typically what he does in his developments is he, he goes after tax credit funding from the state to fund the duplexes. The duplexes are then rented out at a subsidized rate. However, that, that does not say, does not sacrifice the quality of, of the buildings. The, the buildings, I think, I believe he actually has to retain for thirty years by the state and so obviously he has to upkeep that, it's obviously a higher quality, is how he prefers, but, and he, he actually does own general contracting on the properties as well.
Anyone else? Yes, Alan?
How many units are planted?
Uh, so the redevelopment is six duplexes and then five single-family market rate homes that he will sell.
Okay. The, the houses that would be built through the NIFA program, would they have basements?
I think typically he goes slab-on-grade. I, I again, could be wrong, this, I guess, you know, is a rezone and again, he will go over that when it's replatted, if we go forward with this.
I mean, and, and to me, this is just me, just to be clear, we've all lived in an apartment building. It's not D and I's apartment buildings. There may come a time when we need them in Seward and they'll go somewhere.
And that's...
You know, and, and, and they're nice and, and they serve a purpose for many different stages of life.
Absolutely.
I mean, every town has, has an apartment building somewhere. So, you know, it's fine, it's fine to have them, whether it's here or someplace else. But you just mentioned rentals, are these to be sold, the, the, NIFA project would be that be sold or a rental home?
So those will be, they, they will be rentals, he will, again, they will be subsidized rental for applicants that qualify for that.
Okay, single family would be sold, bro?
The single family are market rate, yes.
At market rate.
If I could tag on this real quick. So after three years, though, he has to, they have, Dana Point has to maintain them for three years, correct?
I think it's thirty, maybe.
Thirty years? I don't remember all about that program. There's a certain number of years? How long does Dana Point have to basically manage those, those units?
As far as I'm aware, it's thirty again. I'm not the develop, developer for that.
Sure.
He wasn't able to make it, so. It is something that obviously he has to retain for quite a while.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanna make sure that was clear. Alan, do you wanna add anything?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Yes, Dean?
Now, with, with this storage facilities and, and RV parking and stuff, how, how do you think that's gonna affect what you're gonna do? Do you, do you have a problem with that or do you think the developer will?
I guess to answer your question, no, I, I do, as a developer of purchasing all seven... Uh, I guess to answer your question, no, I, I do, as a developer of purchasing all seventy acres, um, I do not see a problem there. Um, and I've talked to Matt Thomas, who's the president of Dana Point extensively, um, and he does not foresee any problems there as well. Um, part of the reason why we, we say that is, um, which, I guess you can kind of see on the screen there, there's a, there's a natural buffer zone, I guess you could call, so, um, there's actually a creek that runs through there that goes to the pond. And, uh, it's obviously wooded, um, trees, and it, it does provide a nat- natural buffer zone. I believe, um, going from light industrial to then residential, um, multifamily type stuff. Um, and that is, you know, when we go back and, and, and go through and plot this, that, that is what our preliminary plot will do. Um, is that will be a, um, a natural buffer for light industrial to residential and multifamily. Um, to, to our point, you know, Seward does need apartment complexes, um, in, in this area, I believe, further south can serve that, so.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none this time. We may call you back up if we have any other questions, but thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on item number nine?
Just wanted to make a clarification on that. Tom Madsky, and I've also been married for fifteen years. My dad, my grandpa was county, uh, county attorney and my dad sat here for sixteen years as a city council member, so... Anyways, um, the buffer he's talking about is a creek down below, so you can see right, to me, this is two, two snakes, one snake with two heads. You, the buffer zone is a creek down below, you can see right, I mean, I can stand right here and the creek's probably ten feet below from standing where the new, uh, housing development's going to the RV. And I would say that's probably what, a hundred yards? I mean, a hundred, what's a football field? A hundred yards from where this new housing development is, is to where the RV storage is gonna be? So, I guess that's, that's two snake, or two heads of one snake, but anyways. Um, I also like to say that, uh, these people will come up here and talk about what their community is back there. I remember talking to Josh Eichmeyer about maybe coming up and talking to these people and see what they thought. And he goes, "Yeah, when I was running for mayor, I never even knew that was places out there. I didn't know this place even existed. I didn't know there's homes out there." And this is very true. People don't know these people live back here. Very nice houses, great people, a great tight-knit community back there. Now we're talking about bringing low-income homing, homes back in there, and it's gonna devalue their housing. Um, I don't know, I don't think this is the right thing to do to build these low-income housing back here with these people that live here. Last night we talked about, um, a lot of the kids in the community didn't there. It's a small, the road is very narrow. There's no stop signs, no streetlights, no sidewalks. I found out that there is a speed limit sign there, but somebody addressed that to me, I guess I never noticed that. Maybe you haven't seen me drive through there a couple times, but anyways. Um, this is a very tight-knit group. Um, they're gonna come up here and talk how close they are. But there is kids, there's a park across the street there, um, which will be adjoining to the RV park, by the way. Um, there's a park, nobody knows that park's there. Mark Roskmaier has an autistic son. He's in my son's class. His name is Brian. He is on his bicycle all the time up and down that street. Every one of these residents watch, keep an eye on him because they trust each neighbor as, as he rides his bike up and down the street. I told the story last night as I built my storage units, I had bicycle tracks on my concrete. And I knew it was Brian, but I didn't say nothing. I thought they were kind of, you know, a kid riding his bike and that's what they do, that's what he does out there. There's other kids out there, though. They have, uh, they have kids. They play baseball in the street there all the time. Um, they're on the Seward Junior Jays baseball team. They're right in the middle of Cottonwood, right in the middle of Cottonwood playing baseball there. I have only sixty-two units over there at, at, at Cottonwood. I address each one of my renters, do not speed, respect everybody out here. Um, respect, just be in and out, don't be in there dark, and they do, and they can contest to that because I respect these people out there. Trust me, I've been chewed out and I'm a little skinny a few times from, from some things I was doing, but we addressed it. But anyways, I mean, like I said, there's no stop signs. There's nothing out there. This, this community is, nobody knows it's there and you're gonna bring this low-income housing in there for all the rest of the kids playing in the street, riding their bikes. And, um, you know, I don't think it was presented very well last night, um, by some other people of what this community is and that's why it got voted, uh, by the planning board commission last night. But I'm asking you, each and every one, vote no, or at least change it to an R two. I think, uh, R two, or so you can not build apartments, you know? We know what low housing does to the community. We know what low housing does to a community that's back there. We know what happens. That's all I'm gonna say. Appreciate every time. Like I said, my dad sat here for sixteen years. He called it another name, but not city council, but thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to comment on item number nine?
Vicki Libby, twenty-five fifty-five Redwood Road. Um, I've lived out there now, I think it's twenty, twenty-one years, and we lived out there because we wanted to be in a small neighborhood. And it was perfect. My kids grew up there. And the reason I moved because I lived right over here underneath the blue water tower and they kept escaping. So out there, they couldn't escape. Um, it's a quiet neighborhood, or it was. And, like Tom said, he has his storage units out there and we all fought tooth and nail for that not to go in, but it still came in. And he's doing really good with his, um, people that are renting out of his buildings. They are good. They're not, they aren't rowdy. They've been really nice. Um, also, we never did ask to be annexed. We were told we were going to be annexed. So that was another thing. We never got letters saying that we were going to be annexed, nothing. This is the first time we've gotten a letter saying something's happening out there. So, I don't know. It's, it's just not something that we want to happen. Yes, we want resident, but we want an R two, not an R three. Because we don't want the low-income housing. We don't want apartment buildings. We just want single-family homes that have come out there. And all of us that are here tonight, we are like sisters and brothers because we all get along out there, even though some of the times my sisters and my brothers don't get along. But all of us out there, we at least, if we don't like something, we talk to each other and make it work. So if you can change it from an R three to an R two, we would appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on item number nine? Welcome.
I'm Kate Lewis, twenty-five ninety-six Redwood Road. Uh, there has been some new information presented here tonight in regards to the type of housing that's going to be out there. Uh, the neighbors have kind of discussed it a little bit about whether it was going to be income-related housing or not, and, uh, that was not presented last night, that that would be included out there. Um, it kind of sounds like that new development that you're suggesting, Thomas, will back up to that storage unit eventually or they'll be able to see it from their yards. In regards to our neighborhood, um, back in April, when we were trying to get the lagoons cleaned up, I spoke to you, Greg, about the housing. He had never been out there either, but you're fairly new to Seward. And he said, had he been here when those houses were built, those houses would not have been out there because it's more of an industrial area, rail yards being developed as industrial. And then in, um, June, I believe it was, I talked with you, Ed, and he also implied to me that it was kind of a general feeling that those houses don't even belong there. There's only eleven houses out there and they've been there for fifty years. So chances are the houses were there before the light industrial was there. Sounds like there hasn't been a lot of communication about what was on down there. The current, the residents haven't gotten any information before. I'm only a four-year resident of the neighborhood. Um, I can see R two if you have single-family homes, owner occupied. Um, you know, everybody out there owns their home. Everybody takes care of their place. I don't know how many of you have been out there. Uh, I know we had a lot of traffic in the neighborhood recently. I don't know, it was from these folks or you folks or who, the planning commission? But we've seen a lot of increased traffic just driving down Redwood, turning around because there's no way out, inspecting the neighborhood, seeing what's going on. Uh, it was implied to us that rip the extended curb around, go back onto Cottonwood. Cottonwood's the only street going in and out down there. That's our only way to get to that neighborhood. There's already, like, traffic by Progressive Avenue. I don't know if you're all familiar with Progressive and Cottonwood. You've got the church, you've got McDonald's, you've got the hotel, you've got Casey's, you've got Napa Auto. They're all within like a block of each other, trying to get in and out of there. It is a dangerous place. So I suggested if we're having any type of zoning change, we need a traffic study. Yield signs, I guess people don't see them. It's hard to tell where the parking lot ends with Casey's, where it ends with Napa. They come flying out to Cottonwood. There's vehicles sitting there. You just take your chances. So I guess we're, we're just asking to keep our neighborhood our neighborhood, but if it wasn't good enough for houses in April, or good enough for the houses to be back there in June, then why all of a sudden do we want more houses back there when it's all I one industrial? And there is a lot of it around, but we've learned to live with it. We've talked to the folks. We, like I said, we've got some other issues down there that we need to clean up because it is a nice neighborhood. We just want our entrance into our neighborhood to be as nice as your entrance is into yours. So that's, uh, I guess what we're looking for is if any zoning, R two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, thank you. Jonathan, did you want to add anything?
I was just gonna mention, uh, this is on NIFA's website. It says the compliance period is fifteen consecutive taxable years.
Thanks for clarifying that for us. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on item number nine?
Tom calls, twenty-four fifty, Redwood. Resident back there, uh, I've only been back there three and a half years. Um, we were like you both. Uh, I moved to town in ninety-nine. I had no idea that addition was back there. Um, I had some friends, pastor of a church that, we, we went and visited them and they told us where and we saw the dead end and we thought we had made the wrong move. You know, this is not where they live. But you go on back there and it's our own little world. It is, it is unique. Uh, Seward, I don't think has another place like it. Yes, we're selfish on, on this one, too. We want it to stay that way. We, we really like that we don't have any streetlights. We like that Brian can play on the street and he can run right into my house and he's the autistic boy, um, and he's safe. And, and we, we want, you know, Brian to be safe. It's not all about Brian, uh, but, but it is. It is that kind of neighborhood. Um, that, that there is that, that freedom that... The, the thing that I would like to see happen is the same thing. Um, I would, I would like no change, uh, to, to the neighborhood at all, but if, if there is change, um, we'd like to be something, something that's comparable to what we're doing now. We've got eleven homes on, you could say, seven acres, roughly, six, seven acres. Now, we know that's ideal and we're not gonna, you know, but if we end up with seventeen, um, families living in, in five acres, you know, now all of a sudden, we're fifty percent more than we have now and even less space. And we all understand what low-income housing is. Um, low-income housing, they don't stay very long. They don't take care of their properties as well as homeowners. I know, I mean, I've, I've been, I've lived in them before. I've lived in apartments before and I understand that I'm probably gonna live in a place that's not quite as nice a neighborhood if I'm in that situation. And, and I, I think that's, we, we do need those types of, of places around town. But I don't think this neighborhood is the place to put that. I think this neighborhood, if you go down, there was discussion last night, I could, I, I wanted clarification on this, that, um, Redwood could become a through street. Is that correct? You know, if, if, if you have, you know, Redwood become a through street and Cottonwood now, uh, through street going to the south, now, now you, you've just definitely changed a, a neighborhood altogether. There's, there's not any closeness, there's not any, um, neighborhood feel to it. It's, it's just, now it's just become another housing complex that's, that's being built. We, we just ask that it be considered, um, for R two zoning instead of R three zoning or that, um, it's, it's just denied. Um, and that, that we just stay light industrial. Uh, the light industrial that's out there, and Thomas and I have had this discussion and he and I are in disagreement on this, but, uh, Tom Madsky's, uh, self-storage, it's well-kept. And so it's, it's one place there and that's, that's what we look at. Um, uh, the, uh, construction, Anderson Construction, as you come into the area, it's well-kept. It's a nice building. If we end up with another nice building or another, uh, rental facility, self-storage, you know, behind us, if it's kept up and it looks nice, it's still gonna be more positive to us in, in a lot of ways than low-income housing and, and just a multitude of people, um, converging on that neighborhood. So, thank you very much for your time. Questions?
Any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you.
I'm coming back here. I live at thirteen ninety-one, nine, thirteen ninety-nine Redwood. Um, you know, when I came to the meeting last night, one of the things that I complained about was that the lack of any kind of clarification, what was really trying to be done down there. And then Tom explained that what they're trying to do for homes and like, uh, townhomes, basically. Now, tonight, I'm hearing that this could be low-income stuff and then everything's gonna be on a slab. And to me, that is not equivalent to what we currently have here. Pictures, they look nice and stuff like that, but I've been there approximately eighteen years, I think it is. When I first moved there, the house directly behind me was a low-income house. And it just gradually kept going down and down and down and down. And that, it finally got, they got removed out of the house and now the people living in there are taking care of the place and it looks great. What I don't wanna see is between now and ten years down the road, or whatever the time period is on this, that we can start seeing that happen to our neighborhood also. And I'd rather see R two as a minimum. And I would rather see that we're putting individual homes into the area which more represents what's currently already there instead of townhomes or duplexes. Because I think it better serve our neighborhood and we are a tight-knit community and we can bring those kind of people back into our community, I think, too, if they were part of it, if they're all individual homes and stuff. And I think it'd be the better fit for our area.
Thank you. Hang, hang one second. Any questions? Just make sure. Seeing none, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on item number nine? Seeing no one else, I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing on item number nine. Uh, questions or comments from the council, I guess, then?
This was another situation where, I think, Ed, you said that this particular parcel has never been a part of the comprehensive plan, correct?
The outer west portion of it has not been.
The west portion has not been? You know, this whole area, when it first was developed, this Quinnto Oaks development way back in the early seventies, it was not even a part of the city. It was just out. There was, uh, Tenneco was out there, then there was... There was, Tenneco was out there, then there was nothing. And then there was, this all kind of sprung up outside of the control or governance or planning of the city. And then I think someone mentioned like two thousand and two is when it got annexed, right?
Approximately.
So we're, we're kind of at that stage that eventually we were gonna get to where, okay, now this is annexed, it has to become a part of the long-term planning. And so we've already got a couple of issues. We've got, someone wants to put RV storage, someone wants to put neighborhoods out here. How's this all gonna fit, not just now, but twenty years from now? And so I hesitate until we really can think of the bigger picture here to make any ruling on changing it to R three or, or anything. Because I, I think there needs to be more discussion on what, what are we gonna do out here? Because we wanna take into consideration the, the concerns of the neighbors. You know, I mean, they didn't ask to be a little island out there. But yet, as a growing city, we have to have places for RV storage. We have to have places for, you know, tool and die shops, other light industrial things. Is that gonna be in the rail campus area? Well, that's for us to decide. You know, are we gonna allow them? We're gonna have here pretty soon a hundred and twenty-some lots, you know, available in the, in the city of varying demographics as far as what kind of construction it's gonna be. So do we add this, you know, and do we need a place where there's gonna be apartment buildings? I mean, you look around, you drive around Lincoln, there's apartment buildings all over the place, here and there. So yeah, we do probably need, if the city's gonna grow. Those are all the big-picture items I think we have to talk about. So I would hesitate to make any change tonight until we, because we're talking about, you know, the long-term plan of the city here, in my opinion. So... I don't know if that means we table it or we don't do anything. I don't know what the motion would be, but I hesitate making any change.
Well, it's an ordinance, so someone has to introduce the ordinance and we're able to vote on this.
Voted down?
Yeah, the other thing is we would, if we would forward with the ordinance, with the motion, there would be the waiting of three meetings, correct? So if that were voted down, or were not, were not passed, then you would have, you would be having this for at least two more meetings if you wanted to go that route. Or you could table this and not bring it up at all. So, and then, but I would ask if you table it, that there's clear direction from the council as to how you want us to proceed in the, in the meantime, so we're not just waiting for something to happen that we're supposed to be the ones making it happen.
Yeah, I don't know which way to go, that's why I've come back.
Okay, yeah.
So I need advice.
Greg, when is the, the comprehensive plan coming out?
You'll start seeing the initial portions of it in December, I believe.
Now, not to give away any information, because I'm not sure exactly, but from being on that, that committee...
It's all public information.
Right, but is it going to be that granular, that we're going to be taking? I didn't realize we were getting that, you know, close neighborhood to neighborhood to neighborhood. I thought we were more along the lines of saying certain areas of the city, you know, we're looking at, at developing housing and we're looking at developing light industrial. I don't know that waiting for the comprehensive plan is going to give us a specific, or do you think it will?
It'll give you a general idea. Obviously, we have members of the council that sat on the planning. And we've had our open houses and I think we've had members of, of the neighborhood down there come to a few of those open houses. I know I talked to Mr. Baker extensively at the last one. He's not here today, but he was there last night. This area is identified in the comp plan for some sort of mixed residential, residential area adjacent to them. And that came from the discussions that you were both a part of, Councilman Schmidt, Councilman Beck, where we said we would prefer to try and, as we say, transitionally zone away from their residential because it doesn't make sense, as, as the testifier said, to have residential next to industrial. It really, we wanna always try to transitionally zone away from it. And so the recommendation on that portion, at least, up by them, is to transitionally zone away. And so it is a recommendation of a, of a residential. But they don't go through and say, we think this one needs to be R one, this needs to be R two, this needs to be R three, this needs to be R four. They give a little bit less detail to it. But the recommendation that would come for consideration by planning and zoning, it counts, most likely, will show residential in this area. For that reason. That's part of the draft plan that is available online at the Sewer Tomorrow.
Sewertomorrow.com?
Yep, and it was presented at all the open houses, that plan.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
I may make motion not to recommend at this time until we can follow up and make sure that we are, we're gonna make sure everything is completed to what we, our needs are and their needs are.
So you'd like to table this item?
Yes, I would like to table this.
Okay, until a future meeting?
Correct.
And in the meantime, what specifically would you like to see done?
I think we need to go back and review everything more in general to make sure, because we got commerci, we got, I mean, it's a light industrial out there now. And they're, you know, we're combining them. I, I think we really need to go back and make sure that we're doing everything correctly to our ordinances and to our, as far as determining what level of, uh, we're going to rate them at. If it's R two, R three, I think we need to really look at this because this is an area that years and years ago wasn't even, wasn't annexed. We got another issue, Red Run, that we brought them in now, that, and we annexed them in. Are we gonna start seeing all these issues throughout our town? I think we need to go back and look at everything a little more thorough to verify that we are doing everything correctly and make sure we're fair.
Longest motion ever.
Sorry. What, what come up here is concerning me because we have other issues that's gonna come possibly out.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
So we motion to table it at this time until we get more information to present. We're not, I'm not sure exactly what that looks like, but once we have the information, we'll either go back to the plan.
We continue to discuss what that is?
Yeah.
For direction.
Part of that information, I guess, I, do we have any statistics about how the Knifefoot neighborhood back by the cemetery has fared as far as how is affected property values in the surrounding area? As far as has there been any additional deterioration of the neighborhood? Has there been any crime or, or, you know, what has been the impact of having those houses? I drive by and they're all really cute, they're all decorated for every single holiday, they're very well-kept up. I don't see any outward issues, but I guess if everyone's raising concerns about the impact of low-income housing or Knifefoot housing, then let's see if we have any statistics that back up anything.
I don't know that we have anything specific to that. We can ask the police department if they have any statistics, but if you recall when we... Just for everyone else, we have a motion and a second, this is any further discussion. That's where we're at. When the discussion's finished, we'll go back and have a vote on the motion. If you recall, when we had the original Dana Point proposal for the Loma Cemetery there, there was concern about what does low-income housing mean? And I think there was a stigma attached to that conversation. And I, I, I don't think it mean necessarily, you know, poor residents renting there. It's subsidized, but it's, a lot of them were three-bedroom, if I remember, homes. And, and like you said, the, the materials used were like brick or stone or, you know, to some extent. So I, I think, I think the, the stigma didn't, didn't hold for those particulars. I've never been inside one since then. That was about, what, five years ago?
Yeah, no, I was on council before.
Four years ago? So I don't recall, I mean, I've never been in one, I don't know exactly what the quality is now. But that's just some history for those that weren't here, part of that.
Ed?
Mayor, I, I can report that I've not received any property maintenance complaints from those eleven units on Grand Park Drive.
Okay.
In a previous conversation with Matt Thomas, he said they've been full with a waiting list for those rental units.
Yes, Jonathan?
One thing I just wanna add, if we move this to an R residential, or really booking this on two industrial zones and moving that within there, just doesn't seem like it's a fit for the neighborhood. It's, it's kind of a, it's moved to that light industrial, you're, you're booked in by those two storage units and then all of the properties along where...
The left corner.
The, the Twin, Twin Oaks or whatever is, is all light industrial as well, so that was my one thought.
Any other discussion?
So with NIFA, this is all new to me. So is it, does, does that require an R three zoning for qualification or...
The NIFA is just basically a tax credit. You have to have so many points, the developer gets so many points and they get so many points, they qualify for the, the tax credit, which then they use to build the units. In this case, we're talking about townhomes, you know. And so, but I think oftentimes, like, like if you recall with the Shoal Creek, the request for R three was because of the setbacks were different than R two. And so if they wanted to have a freestyle garage, for example, in those lots, that would've been problematic. And, and even though going to R three, again, technically you, you would, you could put an apartment complex there with a special use permit. And that was, if you recall, that whole discussion back then. Shoal Creek is by the, the Mills School, if you're familiar with that developer. So, okay.
So we have a motion table that's been seconded. Is this any further discussion? Before we go to a vote, I wanna make sure it was comfortable. Any questions or comments?
But, but you do understand, I, I just wanna make sure we're doing, basically what Jonathan said, R two, R three. Are we doing it right? Because it's light commercial right now. I, I just wanna make sure, clarify that.
Yeah, your motion is going to be to table this item tonight.
Correct.
And then we're going to, I think, get more information and come back to, presumably to the council because unless we didn't need to go back to the planning commission, but I, I, until we know what we're looking at, I can't tell you for sure. But we'd likely would come back to the council because we already have the recommendation. Unless we feel that there's information that the, that the planning commission should've had when they made their decision and didn't, then we might feel the need to go back. But again, I can't say for sure yet until we get down that path a little bit more. So motions to table it, the second to be. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, register your votes. Please pay the votes.
Plaining favor, Welkin, Beck, Camford, Tress, Singleton, Schmidt, Hans, opposed, Julie.
Item number ten is also a public hearing. This is consideration of an ordinance for text amendments to the city's sewer unified, unified land development ordinance. There's a lot of words there in the, in the agenda, but this is specifically what they were talking about, shipping containers in particular, but also covers other storage areas. Ed, did you wanna walk us through this?
Okay, this is a proposed text amendment to the...
Yeah, Ed, and one thing, if, if you're not riveted by this next item, I would like to leave. I'll, we'll hold off a second before we start this item, if you wanna go.
Thanks.
You bet. Thank you for coming this evening.
Yep.
Are we good? Okay, we'll go, we'll go ahead. Ed, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed text amendment to the Unified Land Development Ordinance in reference to regulating the use of shipping containers within the city's jurisdiction. Typical shipping container sizes vary from twenty-foot to forty-foot long by eight foot wide, eight foot six inches tall. And they're also available in larger sizes, forty-five, forty-eight, and fifty-three foot long. Shipping containers were originally designed to transport materials and cargo via railcar, semi-truck, or ship from point A to point B. The use of shipping containers has evolved over the years to being used for permanent storage containers for personal property as a cheaper option than building a new commercial storage building. And they've actually been used for building material for residential occupancies. The use of shipping containers for permanent storage containers in Seward has increased in multiple zoning districts, including the Central Business District. The city's current ULDO does not specifically address shipping containers. The appearance of shipping containers has an industrial type of look which may not be appropriate for residential, central business, and urban corridor districts, especially when the use of shipping containers are used in a district that abus residential districts. The proposed text amendments include adding the definition of a shipping container to Article Two, definitions, adding the shipping container use type to Article Three, miscellaneous use types, and adding shipping containers to Article thirty-one supplemental use and development regulations, and adding the shipping container use type to the use matrix, which would only allow the use in I two, general industrial district, I one, limited industrial district, and only under a special use permit as an accessory use to the primary use in a business park, district, or in a C two highway, commercial district. All shipping containers in existence prior to the adoption of these regulations will be regulated under Article forty-three, non-conforming uses. Before this item was brought to planning commission, a manager from the local Walmart contacted the zoning department staff to express a concern with prohibiting shipping containers from the C two district, which Walmart is located in. The Walmart staff member stated that due to the size limitations that the city required them to build their store under a special use permit, this limited, this limited the storage area for inventory. Back when the Walmart appeared in front of the planning commission, city council, they were required to build a smaller square footage than what they wanted to build. This is of additional concern for the upcoming holiday season in that they are forced to use shipping containers temporarily to star, store large amounts of inventory for Black Friday and the remaining holiday season. The Walmart staff member stated that if they could no longer use shipping containers, that they might not be able to have a Black Friday sale for Seward. Planning commission met on November twelfth and voted to recommend approval by majority vote. They did add a, a thirty-day removal and replace timeframe for pre-existing shipping containers. Some of the local business owners that have them stated they use them to store scrap metal. Call that to Lincoln or, or else, where they get rid of that scrap metal. So the shipping container's gone for a period of time before it comes back. The notice public hearing was published and city staff consulted with the design and planning firm of RDG. I passed around pictures. The first packet is examples of existing shipping containers in Seward in multiple zoning districts, some are in the Central Business District, some are in the urban corridor, some are in residential. The single photo is a, an example of shipping containers in Scotts Bluff. You can imagine, there's a hundred and seventy-five shipping containers in that picture. It is zoned, light, industrial, in Scotts Bluff. So that's what it can evolve into.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Are there any questions or comments for Ed from the council at this time? Yes, John?
So Ed, what do we do when you are a manufacturer or a small business? And a lot of your products come in, in these types of containers. Because these containers, even where, where I'm at, Tenneco especially, this is the type of container comes in, majority of their freight comes out. So what are we gonna do to other businesses, even right down the street here? There's a welding shop and, so if he does any business, say overseas or buys even steel overseas, his product comes in these types of roll-offs, are we gonna tell him they can't buy their product?
I forgot to mention, at the planning commission member, one of the members asked if the Central Business District could be included with the special use permit requirement to address, you know, how many, where they're stored, screening, et cetera.
There's the only, even Hughes Brothers that are right down here that, I very think that containers like that could as well.
Ed, is it right that if you're in an industrial area, that, is that, that's allowed, isn't it?
Correct.
But if, if that's the residential, then we're saying it's not.
Well, if it...
And again, the ULDO does not specifically address them, shipping containers at all.
But the, the idea would be is that if you are a Tenneco or Hughes Brothers, you're in an industrial zone area that this, that you'd still be allowed to have these there. It's, it's, which ones would require a special use permit again?
Commercial highway.
Okay.
And, yeah, that one was the only one we proposed.
Business?
In the business part, going down the street.
So I think some, so at least for those users, and I assume Walmart would also fall into that, so...
C two highway, commercial.
Yeah, so they shouldn't be impacted by it. It's just, we're just trying to, to address and prevent any kind of proliferation of this as you get closer into residential areas or downtown areas. as you get closer into residential areas or downtown areas to make sure that we at least have something on the books to address it. Yeah, John?
Why did Walmart bring this up then, if they would not be able to have a Black Friday? Because a lot of their goods come in there.
They brought it up because, uh, initially we were talking about not allowing it in the C two highway commercial district. Repending to not allow it.
But that's been addressed with this.
Correct.
That's been addressed.
So, it would be allowed under a special use permit.
So, Black Friday has been saved once again.
The hard part, and, and there may be somebody here that may speak to us, the hard part for Walmart was we discussed having them permitted in commercial districts if they were screened basically in the backyard. They're in the back, what we call the backyard, I know it's commercial, but the backyard, it's behind...